Bienvenidos a un foro de candidatos presentados por los candidatos para el Distrito 2 del Distrito de la Ciudad de Roseville. ¿Pueden escucharme bien? Soy Kathy Sousa, miembro de la Lejía de las Mujeres de Voto en la Casona de Placer, y seré la moderadora de este foro de hoy. La Lejía de las Mujeres de Voto es una organización no partidaria, no lucrativa de mujeres y hombres, establecida para promover la responsabilidad política a través de la participación activa informada en el gobierno. La Lejía no apoya, opone o evalúa candidatos políticos o partidos. Aunque nuestra política no partidaria no permite el apoyo de candidatos políticos, sin embargo, después de un estudio cuidado tomamos posiciones sobre los asuntos políticos. La Lejía invita a todos los que estén interesados en el gobierno y en la política y en servir al pueblo a unirse a nosotros. El formato de este foro será el siguiente: Cada candidato hará una declaración de abertura de tres minutos. Después, los candidatos responderán a preguntas de nuestro público. Las preguntas serán evaluadas para la apropiación y redundancia. Cada candidato tendrá un minuto para responder a cada pregunta. Y finalmente, los candidatos tendrán dos minutos para hacer una declaración de cierre. En el interés del tiempo y el decoro, les pido a nuestro público que mantengan todo el aplauso hasta el final del foro, y que silben sus teléfonos. Y ahora me gustaría presentar a los candidatos que están corriendo para el Distrito 2 del Distrito de la Ciudad de Roseville. Eric Eisenhower, Pauline Rucucci, y Richard Wimmer. Bienvenidos y gracias por estar dispuestos a participar esta noche. Estamos listos para empezar. Vamos a comenzar con las declaraciones de abertura, y durante el periodo de preguntas y respuestas, giraremos el orden. Pero para las declaraciones de abertura, comenzaremos con el Sr. Eisenhower.
Muchas gracias Kathy y a la Lejía de las Mujeres de Voto por poner esto en marcha junto con Arcona. Gracias a ustedes, y gracias a mis compañeros candidatos por no solo estar aquí sino por su servicio a nuestra comunidad y a nuestro país. A Pauline por su servicio desde 1989. Saben, usted es parte de lo que hizo que Roseville fuera un lugar donde elegí vivir hace 11 años. Y Richard, gracias por su servicio a nuestro país como veterano. Saben, todos nos debemos de dar un deuda de gratitud a usted también. Y por supuesto, gracias a todos ustedes por venir y prestarle importancia. Quisiera que hubieran más gente aquí. Quisiera que esos chavos fueran llenos. Pero yo, mi nombre es Eric, soy un propietario de una pequeña empresa local. Yo propiedad de una empresa justo afuera de la luz. Hacemos tecnología y computadoras, y he estado involucrado en varias campañas políticas a lo largo de los años. Si ganara, estaría honrado por tu apoyo. Y lo que haría es servirte, seré una voz para ti. Tú depende de mí cuando te envíes una carta, yo responderé inmediatamente. Y siempre seré accesible a ti. Me importa nuestra comunidad, por eso decidí correr. Sentí que tenía un propósito para hacer esto. Y siempre sentí que tenía un propósito para correr un día. No sabía cuándo sería el momento. Pero este año solo sabía que era el momento. No quiero mirar atrás un día y saber que no he podido hacer una diferencia y no he hecho más. Así que si soy honrado por servir en el Distrito de la Ciudad de Roseville, planeo equilibrar el presupuesto sin levantar impuestos. Planeo trabajar en la necesidad de la pobreza, que es una preocupación que todos nos ponen cuando hablo con la gente. Y creo que necesitamos empoderar, no permitir a la pobreza. Creo que el trabajo debe ser una parte importante de esa ecuación. Finalmente, creo en nuestra seguridad pública y en apoyar a nuestros primeros respondientes. He firmado la promesa del Ayuntamiento de los Votos de la Plegada, y voy a estar con nuestros oficiales de la policía. Y finalmente, creo que necesitamos preservar y no deshacer la historia de nuestras comunidades. Y uno de los ejemplos de eso es el historial de esta casa que fue destrozada. Creo que necesitamos ponerla de nuevo. Así que muchas gracias por estar aquí. Y pasaré a Pauline.
Ms. Rucucci.
Gracias, gracias Eric. De nuevo, estoy muy feliz de estar aquí y muchas gracias Arcona y la Lejía de las Mujeres de Voto por ayudarnos a poner esto en marcha. Soy Pauline Rucucci, estoy en el Distrito de la Ciudad de Roseville. Y corriente en general, estoy corriendo para la reelección al Distrito de la Ciudad, y esta vez en el Distrito 2. Y el Distrito 2 es esencialmente histórico de Roseville y delineando áreas establecidas. Y he vivido allí toda mi vida, mi esposo lo ha hecho, mis hijos han graduado aquí. Tenemos en realidad cinco generaciones de Roseville, literalmente casi en la misma calle. Fui a las escuelas locales, escuela secundaria, la escuela secundaria de Roseville, mis hijos también. Soy enfermera registrada, gradué en Sac State. Luego me interesé en nuestra comunidad. Y tuve la oportunidad de estar en la comisión de planificación. Y fui designada a la comisión de planificación y eso realmente me dio una idea de planificar áreas. Y trabajé mucho en el plan específico, que es muy, muy útil y casi la gran cosa de hacer cuando quieres correr para el distrito. También corriente durante dos temporadas, ocho años para la agencia de agua de la Casona de Placer. Y se encargan de la energía y el agua, y el Distrito de Roseville tiene un contrato con la agencia de agua de la Casona de Placer. Y estoy en muchas comunidades que son relacionadas con la utilidad. Saben, ¿por qué corriente? Amo Roseville, he vivido allí toda mi vida. Me gusta trabajar con la comunidad, me gusta tomar cafés, hay gente que envía correos electrónicos y hablan de problemas que están ocurriendo con ustedes. Estoy esperando... mis prioridades son... Tengo muchos, pero los tres más altos son la seguridad, la salud. La seguridad de nuestra comunidad, la salud de nuestra comunidad, y ser fiscalmente sound en un mundo cambiante. Y me gustaría decirles que tengo el apoyo, el apoyo de la Asociación de la Policía de Roseville, la Asociación de las Fuerzas Armadas, pequeñas y grandes empresas, BIA, Chamber de Roseville, Chamber Sacramento Metro. Y pequeñas empresas en nuestro Distrito 2. Los barbadores, los personas de la nail, las personas que en realidad trabajan, son mi gente, saben, con la que trabajar. Y estoy muy contenta de tener su apoyo, además, miembros del Distrito, maestros, personas que están en comisiones de planificación, comisiones y miembros del Consejo escolar. Y tus vecinos vecinos están apoyándome. Y con su ayuda, quiero continuar con lo que estoy haciendo porque el Distrito de Roseville vale todo. Hace bien, está haciendo bien, pero necesitamos trabajar como equipo para pasar por los años continuos. Gracias.
Sr. Wimmer.
Y una vez más, gracias a todos por estar aquí. Soy Richard Wimmer, corriendo para el candidato del Distrito 2 del Distrito de la Ciudad. Soy veterano y también un propietario de una pequeña empresa local. He estado corriendo una campaña independiente y completamente autonómica. Me mudé con mi familia en 1992 y crecí aquí en Roseville. En mi corazón me gustaría decir que nunca dejé de Roseville, pero físicamente sí. Fui a la universidad y me uní al ejército. El ejército me llevó a muchos lugares. Fui a Georgia, Texas, Louisiana, viví en Kansas, incluso Washington DC, y otros lugares como Irak, Afganistán, Alemania y Corea del Sur. Vi muchas cosas allí, pero ustedes estarán contentos de saber que nunca vi un lugar como Roseville. Por eso siempre he intentado volver aquí para vivir. Así que terminé mi servicio en el ejército y he vuelto a casa. Siempre he mantenido mi hogar de récord durante mi tiempo en el ejército aquí en Roseville, con la intención de volver. Siempre he pagado todos mis impuestos estatales y locales. Y he votado en cada elección federal y local. Lo cual es interesante, este va a ser en realidad la primera elección en la que he votado en persona. Este último congreso, tuve la oportunidad de votar en persona aquí en Roseville por primera vez. Y lo aprecio, aunque siempre he sido activo cívico durante toda mi vida, mi vida adulta. Así que estaba contento de servir en el ejército, pero también quiero decir que estoy contento de que ustedes todos sirvieron aquí. Así que mientras estaba fuera protegiendo la nación, ustedes están protegiendo aquí Roseville, construyéndolo, siendo mejor. Fue una experiencia bastante para volver después de casi dos décadas de estar fuera de Roseville y ver todo el crecimiento maravilloso, nuevos desarrollos en los bordes, tantas más personas y cosas que hacer. Así que lo aprecio. Todavía tenemos la vida de la ciudad pequeña y actividades, pero somos mucho más grandes ahora también. Así que realmente manejo las cosas de la Casona de Placer. Así que creo que... la razón por la que estoy corriendo es que creo que es muy importante mantener lo que tenemos. Queremos continuar avanzando, continuar creciendo y continuar en un vecindario seguro y en un lugar seguro. Pero creo que es importante reconocer, y creo que he visto, que van a haber muchas decisiones difíciles que van a ser tomadas aquí en el futuro. Así que si miras los próximos dos o cuatro años, quiero asegurarme de que tengamos a alguien que es capaz y realmente sabía tomar decisiones difíciles. Las decisiones que he tomado, algunas veces incluso decisiones de vida y muerte mientras estaba en el ejército. Así que es importante tener eso, mantenerlo en conjunto y mantener todo avanzando, mientras también mantenemos la importancia de los individuos y de las personas individuales. Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora es hora de nuestro periodo de preguntas y respuestas. Este es un round de lightning, así que cada candidato tendrá un minuto para responder a cada pregunta. Y para nuestra primera pregunta, comenzaremos con el Sr. Eisenhower. ¿Qué te inspiró a correr para el Distrito de la Ciudad?
Bueno, como dije, sentí que tenía un propósito para hacerlo. Y sentí que tenía un propósito durante un tiempo para correr para el cargo un día, pero realmente solo se me acumuló. Aunque había un problema particular más que cualquier otro, y esto no es lo único que me importa, o lo único que voy a enfocarme. Pero simplemente, había un problema particular que realmente me importaba y que quería hacer un poco más. Y lo que fue fue la medida F. Y cuando descubrí que una medida aprobada por el voto de nuestros diputados no estaba siendo seguida por nuestro condado, decidí que, saben, después de hablar con varias personas en el cargo a un nivel superior y no sentí que me estaban escuchando, pensé que, saben, quería hacer algo que realmente hiciera una diferencia y realmente era un hombre que esa medida seguía. Así que eso fue lo mayor que realmente me hizo decir, está bien, creo que ahora es hora.
Ms. Rucucci.
El factor más grande por el que quise correr es continuar asegurándonos de que realmente tenemos un fuerte departamento de policía y de fuego. Juste contrataron diez nuevos policías, ocho oficiales policiales, dos oficiales de seguridad, dos personal profesional, para adentrar nuestro departamento de policía para que podamos realmente ser buenos con... Tenemos un punto de acción de tiempo, veamos si tenemos crímenes que llegan a nuestras fronteras, ya sea un cariñazo o lo que sea, pero tenemos muchas más cosas que ver. También he ayudado a apoyar, comenzar a construir nuestro nuevo departamento de fuego. Y estará ahí justo afuera de Sun City. Y vamos a tener nueve bomberos en camino allí. Así que estoy muy comprometido en asegurarnos de que tengan equipamiento. Tenemos más equipamiento de compresión de cintas, equipamiento de seguridad. Quiero todo aquello que pueda ayudar a nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Sr. Wimmer.
Lo que hizo que quisieras involucrarte en el Distrito de la Ciudad fue, de nuevo, cuando regresé este año a Roseville. He estado en cada reunión de distrito de la Ciudad desde febrero, involucrado en los talleres presupuestarios y otros eventos civiles aquí. Y solo vi, nuevamente, teniendo que tomar decisiones difíciles con emoción, empatía y convicción. Así que hay muchos problemas que han sido asociados con la gran cantidad de crecimiento que hemos tenido aquí en Roseville. Hay algunos problemas de pobreza, muchos problemas que se ven dudosos después de volver a Roseville. Así que esos son los problemas que necesitan ser abordados antes de que se vuelvan problemas. Creo que estamos a la altura de la necesidad de abordar estos problemas, tanto individualmente como también con la empatía y la preocupación de... nuevamente, mirando esos problemas y resolviendo ellos de la manera más buena posible. Gracias.
Bien, para nuestra próxima pregunta, comenzaremos con Ms. Rucucci. ¿Cuáles son las habilidades y experiencia que tienen que usted cree que sería beneficioso para usted como miembro del Distrito?
He equilibrado 21 presupuestos con el Distrito de Roseville. He pasado por momentos buenos y momentos malos en el Distrito. He estado en momentos en los que tuvimos recesiones y tuvimos que retroceder y entender por qué debemos hacer eso. He pasado por COVID, he pasado por momentos realmente buenos. He ayudado a trabajar en el plan específico de almostAudrey en Roseville. Tengo una gran comprensión de nuestras utilidades. Somos una ciudad de servicio completo y no hay mucha gente que tenga eso. Nuestros gastos son menores que cualquier área que tengamos, menores que Peach and Egg y probablemente competitivos con Smud. Así que estoy muy orgullosa de mi experiencia en las utilidades en este momento. Y planeo continuar haciéndolo porque eso va a ser lo más importante mientras pasamos el tiempo, asegurándonos de que tengamos nuestros oleos y diferentes cosas que continuaremos a ser una ciudad de servicio completo.
Sr. Wimmer.
Así que algunas cosas que he tenido experiencia también financieramente, siendo un comandante en una zona de guerra, teniendo $21 millón de equipamiento con nosotros que estaba responsable, tenía que mantener, asegurar que lo llevaran, se encargaban y se contaban. Así que realmente, el presupuesto y la responsabilidad fiscal es algo que estoy muy bien sabido. Pero también, nuevamente, mantener la preocupación individual y la convicción de las personas es algo importante que tenemos para ir adelante aquí. Tiene que trabajar muy duro, poner en el tiempo, y asegurar que todos se mantengan juntos y avancen hacia todos estos problemas que tenemos que resolver.
Ms. Eisenhower.
Gracias. Soy un propietario de una pequeña empresa con un título de Finanz. Estoy apoyado por las organizaciones locales de contribuyentes. Y creo que deberíamos hacerlo mejor en términos de equilibrar nuestro presupuesto sin aumentos impuestos. Así que eso es algo que trabajaré duro si me meto en el Distrito. Creo que si miras nuestro presupuesto, saben, hay un dashboard que el auditor estatal tiene donde puedes ver áreas de riesgo alto, y Roseville se ha identificado en un par de áreas como una área de la comunidad que es de riesgo alto y no podemos pagar nuestros gastos. Y la área de beneficios pensionales y de salud para nuestros retirados. Así que creo que deberíamos hacerlo mejor que eso. También estoy preocupado por el aumento impuesto en los hoteles. Esto nos hará menos competitivos con Auburn y Rockland en las convenciones atrapadas. Eso podría tener un impacto en los trabajos y en los ingresos futuros.
Bien, para nuestra siguiente pregunta, comenzaremos con el Sr. Wimmer. Esto es sobre apoyar a nuestros sheriffos. ¿Cómo se sienten sobre la forma en que la medida F fue tratada en la Casona de Placer, específicamente en lo que respecta a la elección de los votantes?
Así que creo que es importante que la seguridad sea muy vital para ir adelante. Tenemos, específicamente para la medida F, tuvo la oportunidad de desequilibrar el presupuesto, pero es importante que se invierta en esa seguridad para ir adelante y mirando eso. Así que creo que necesitamos manejar las cosas con responsabilidad, asegurarnos de que estamos siguiendo el patrón. Creo que es una cosa clave que no hacíamos anteriormente para la medida F.
Bien, y el Sr. Eisenhower.
Así que Richard, en realidad me disagreeo contigo en que no seguir la medida F fue importante para equilibrar el presupuesto. El pago de los diputados de sheriffes estaba aumentando un 3% al año, mientras que el presupuesto del condado estaba aumentando un 4% al año. Así que una cosa que planeo hacer si me meto en el Distrito es exigir que el Distrito, o no el Distrito, sino los supervisores sigan la medida F. Esa es la ley, fue aprobada por los votantes, y nuestro gobierno no está de acuerdo con la ley. Así que creo que si, al menos, si estoy equivocado, votaría para mantener la medida F. Pero si estoy equivocado, entonces ponlo de nuevo a los votantes para votar. Hemos votado en esto varias veces, hemos votado en la medida F, luego lo pusimos de nuevo en la lista, lo votamos de nuevo y lo pusimos de nuevo en la lista. Los diputados de sheriffos son una parte importante de Roseville. Saben, el apoyo a la aire, los diputados de sheriffos, el oficio de los policías, los diputados de los policías. Estos tipos merecen ser pagados como los votantes aprobados. Así que eso es lo que pienso.
Ms. Rucucci.
Creo que la medida F y trabajar con el departamento de sheriffos y hablando sobre los supervisores es francamente un problema de supervisores, básicamente. Cuando hablas de equilibrar presupuestos, estoy buscando lo que estamos haciendo aquí en Roseville, donde tenemos ocho ciclos en los que equilibramos presupuestos. Y también me preocupa los impuestos. Fuimos a comprar gas en San Club y subió 75 cents en el último mes. Eso no es un impuesto de Roseville. Estamos hablando de impuestos estatales y federales, eso no es impuesto de Roseville. No hacemos impuestos a nosotros mismos. Los estados y los federales lo hacen, a menos que sea algo que los votantes decidan que no quieren poner a sí mismos. Y respeto al Servicio de la Policía, como he dicho anteriormente. Y creo que los supervisores tienen que averiguar su presupuesto, como hacemos cuando tenemos que averiguar nuestros salarios y ver lo que eso implica.
Bien, nuestra siguiente pregunta, comenzaremos con el Sr. Eisenhower. ¿Cuál ha sido la participación comunitaria en Roseville o en cualquier otra ciudad?
Bueno, saben, una cosa que estoy orgulloso de es que fui involucrado en algunos foros para abarcar el rango en Sacramento. He estado involucrado en varios sentidos. Estoy en el board de la Asociación de los contribuyentes de la Casona de Placer, la Asociación de contribuyentes de la Casona. Pero quiero hablar específicamente de estos foros para abarcar el rango que organizamos en el condado de Sacramento, pero que quiero traer a la Casona de Placer y traer a Roseville. Porque cuando ellos fueron, cuando ellos fueron una oportunidad para los oficiales de la policía, líderes comunitarios y pastores para hablar sobre la seguridad pública y para que la gente aprenda que cuando un oficial de la policía aparece, no tiene que ser una experiencia negativa. Porque los asesinatos de convertidores catalíticos en Roseville han superado el 200% en los últimos dos años. Creo que, saben, es fantástico, contratamos más oficiales de la policía, eso es genial, pero creo que necesitamos hacer más.
Ms. Rucucci.
Algunas de las actividades que he hecho en la comunidad. Disculpen, he trabajado en XL como una nonprofit, un programa de after-school para niños. Seguía con Roseville, era otro programa allí en el sitio muy cerca en el Distrito 2. Y trabajé allí como presidente durante aproximadamente cuatro años, así que aseguré que los niños tuvieran ropa, tuvieran comida, tuvieran programas para ellos. Y trabajé con la gente. La mayoría de nuestras familias eran hispanas, yo podía hablar español. Y trabajamos juntos en la comunidad para raised awareness de la lectura y el estudio after-school. Así que muchos de los niños fueron a la escuela de Woodbridge y tuvimos una buena relación con los maestros. Y tuvimos estudiantes de secundaria y universidad que eran ayudantes y ayudaron con el trabajo de casa. Y fuimos muy buenos modelos con los niños. Así que ese fue uno de los aspectos que hice en la comunidad y realmente lo disfruté.
Sr. Wimmer.
Sí, he estado involucrado en muchas comunidades en el mundo aquí también. La mayoría de los programas after-school, mucho de los niños trabajan. Pero también aquí localmente en Roseville, mantener mi membresía de mi iglesia todo el tiempo. Y he tenido que volver a ser parte de eso también. Así que voluntariado en la comunidad. También involucrado en la participación cívica también. Creo que es una parte importante de la participación comunitaria que todos necesitamos ser parte de también. Así que eso ha sido trabajar con muchas de las organizaciones de pobreza y grupos, hablar con ellos, tanto el Gathering Inn aquí como otros servicios y no lucrativos que ayudan a la comunidad local en general, en el Distrito 2 y en Roseville en general, estar involucrado en algunos de ellos.
Bien, nuestra siguiente pregunta, comenzaremos con Ms. Rucucci. ¿Cuáles son las mayores desafíos enfrentados al Distrito de la Ciudad de Roseville como un todo?
Creo que los mayores desafíos que hemos tenido y que se están haciendo peor son mandatos estatales y federales, mandatos sin financiamiento, edicto irresponsable que tenemos que ver. Se nota cuando se habla de cuando no conducimos un auto, cuando quieren sacar el automóvil, el automóvil de gas. Y cuándo vamos a ir todo eléctrico, cuando hemos tenido desastres y accidentes durante todo este tiempo. Saben, es bueno que tengas, has dicho, saben, una fecha, esta es una fecha. Pero luego no vas a moverlo hacia atrás y hacia atrás y hacia atrás. No podrían arreglarlo la primera vez que lo dijeron y lo han movido más cerca. Y acabo de volver de una conferencia sobre electricidad y de calo aislado, mucha gente hace esto todo el tiempo. Es solo, saben, es un pensamiento wishful right now, probablemente sucederá en el futuro, pero no sé cómo sucedería, saben, así.
Sr. Wimmer.
Como hemos mencionado algunos de los mayores desafíos aquí para Roseville, hemos pasado uno de los mayores desafíos en los últimos dos años y medio aquí, como mencionabas, el COVID. Pero como las cosas suben de más, es mucho el apoyo federal y estatal. Esos temas se han vuelto locos, incluso mientras que en Roseville localmente hemos estado manejando y estabilizando influencias en nuestra área local. Tenemos que realmente considerar algunos de estos eventos de más siendo apresurados en nosotros y proporcionar un esfuerzo y resistencia a los derechos individuales aquí en Roseville. Un gran parte de lo que vemos, un gran parte de lo que viene de más proviene del gobierno federal. Así que uno de los ejemplos es que la ciudad de Roseville, justamente la semana pasada, está persiguiendo, como hemos mencionado, el programa de refurbimiento de autobuses eléctricos. Uno de los problemas que tengo con eso no es que estamos comprando más autobuses eléctricos, creo que es una gran electricidad. Pero el hecho de que para obtener estos granteles gubernamentales, también tenemos que destruir un autobús diesel por cada autobús eléctrico que compramos. Y es en la ley, tienes que either drill a three and a quarter inch hole in the engine lock or use a power tool to cut it in half. Solo que...
Sr. Eisenhower.
Yo diría atonanestas, solo porque aún no ha sido efectivamente abordado todavía aquí en Roseville o por muchas otras comunidades alrededor del estado. Creo que necesitamos ser creativos y explorar nuevas soluciones. Creo que la vivienda gratuita sin costes adicionales no es una solución. Creo que se ha intentado demasiado y falló. Creo que, como dije, el trabajo debe ser una parte importante de la ecuación. Y también creo el aspecto de la salud mental. Creo que hay muchas cosas más creativas que podemos hacer con la salud mental, muchas más cosas holísticas que podemos hacer. Todos tenemos un propósito. Así que cuando digo que quiero que la pobreza funcione, eso no es algo que digo para ser mío. Digo eso porque tenía un propósito para correr. Nosotros somos creados por una razón. Y quiero creer en la gente y que la gente merece dignidad. La gente merece que alguien crean en ellos. Y creo que realmente podemos liderar el camino para hacer cosas nuevas y innovadoras, para empoderar a la pobreza y hacer cosas innovadoras con la salud mental y ayudar a restaurar a la gente con dignidad y propósito.
Nuestra siguiente pregunta, comenzaremos con el Sr. Wimmer. ¿Cuál es su postura sobre el nuevo campus of hope en Roseville?
He ido a la comisión de la ciudad varias veces. Así que la idea del campus of hope es, creo, una buena. Está poniendo la Casona de Placer, recientemente tuvieron una gran juría sobre la pobreza. Así que mencionaron algunos de los positivos de la idea del campus of hope de consolidar todo este servicio y necesidades que se requieren para nuestra pobreza y transnacional. Creo que eso es... obviamente deben haber algunos seguros específicos contra los que no puede ser un tirón del exterior. Hemos visto muchos mapas de migración pobreza desde el sur de Sacramento hasta High Haiti. Hay un gran repaso en ese lado. Así que una de las cosas que podemos agregar a la idea del campus of hope es esa obligación de residencia que se hablaba en el reporte de la gran juría. Así que creo que es importante porque no solo nos permite gastar dinero wisely, pero a veces tener un miembro de la familia o amigos local es ese último paseo, último paso que la gente necesita reintegrarse a la sociedad.
Sr. Eisenhower.
En este momento, no, no puedo apoyar el proyecto del campus of hope. Tengo demasiadas preguntas sobre ello que aún no he recibido respuestas buenas. Creo que podrían mejorar su sitio web y eso ayudaría mucho porque he ido a su sitio web y no he encontrado la respuesta. He hablado con la gente del Gathering Inn y, saben, hasta ahora no he podido recibir respuestas buenas a mis preguntas. La idea de un campus de ese tamaño en sí mismo me preocupa, pero no estoy absolutamente cegado de ello. Una otra cosa que voy a traer a la C gathering Inn es otra propuesta que estaban construyendo en Leafa Street, justo en el medio de un vecindario residencial, una instalación de 30 habitos con no crimen de background shots. Hice una petición sobre eso, 140 personas lo firmaron. Y gracias Pauline por votar no sobre eso. Porque, saben, creo que tenemos que hacer lo correcto, pero también creo que tenemos que hacer lo correcto.
Ms. Rucucci.
El campus of hope está en propiedad del condado. Hay muchas preguntas sobre ello. Sí, la tamaño es uno de los... Yeah, the size is one of it and the idea of having it encompassing and helping people at one place is good. But I also agree that a lot of times what people want is still have their contact with family or other friends that they have. I believe in helping the homeless. We have a program where we actually have the police go out with social workers and they, and, and social services and they're, and a community worker. And they make sure that we can help people see some of their needs. We work with Placer County with mental health and we actually are looking at permanent supportive housing where people pay, pay rent. They have, they have skin in the game so that, you know, it's not just, it's not free. But a lot of different opportunities to help people to hand up but not, not hand, hand out, not hand up but not hand out. And, and looking them as a, as a whole person and how can we best help them. And we're working with Placer County on boards to do things like that.
Our next question will begin with Mr. Eisenhammer. This will be the first general election since the new districts were drawn. What do you see as the greatest challenges specifically for District Two and how will you address them?
You know, I'm excited that we have a district now. I'm excited that we have somebody to represent our community. You know, I look at the historic Sierra Vista sign, for example, where a community wanted to have its own sign, literally raised the money for this sign, put it up on private property and was told to take it down. And they were told to take it down because it didn't comply with the sign ordinance. But if you've been to the other side of town where the developments are going in, those signs that are just, those do comply with the sign ordinance. And the reason they comply with the sign ordinance is because they're commercial signs. So a non-commercial sign isn't allowed, but a commercial site is a sign. That's not fair. That's not right. And I think that we now are fortunate that we're going to have our own voice to stand up for us so that we, we can get our fair share and not be short-changed by other wealthier parts of town.
Ms. Rakuci?
I think what it does is, you know, the city of Roseville is a hundred and fifty thousand people. That's a lot of places to, to go around and say, get your word out. So in, in fact that they, they have, you know, a redistricting committee and they, and they picked this map, I think that's, that's good. But I just want you to know, people are my people in District Two and all the city of Roseville and the rest of the city council feel this way. We don't not only just represent District Two, we represent all of Roseville. And that's a real important thing because most of the things that we have affect all of us. And that doesn't mean that certain different things are happening in different areas and then they want to bring it up and want to work on it. But talking about signs, you know, when I'm running for election, I have to have a certain size. I have to put it in a certain spot. I have to take it off ten days after the election. There are rules. There are rules of where you do it and, and, and how you do it and why you do it. And, you know, sometimes you just have to play by the rules.
Mr. Wukmer?
It is a great opportunity for District Two here. I will say that every city council member that's elected is elected to represent all of Roseville. However, this is District Two's first opportunity to elect a District Two representative onto the council. So something we need to look at. You mentioned historic Sierra Vista. And there's a lot of historic areas in Roseville that really have been left behind. A lot of that has to do with our CFDs drawn to the community facilities district, where we get funding for actual maintenance. The, the city can't, and refuses to put maintenance into the general funds for things like adding sidewalks and lighting to certain areas. For example, when, when talking with the city manager about Sierra Vista in particular, I was told by the Public Works Department that sidewalks are not a requirement for older areas. And so that's something that we need to look at and bring up all of Roseville. We can't just develop along the edges and forget about the center as we have done for so long. Again, parks maintenance, things like Webber Park and then also Diamond Oaks Park can use a little maintenance as well.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Rakuci. Housing has become very expensive in Roseville. What would you like to see the city do to ensure that young families and people like teachers can afford to live in Roseville?
We're looking at different housing in, in all over Roseville. Affordable housing element, actually all our specific plans from, in the, in the early, in the early, when we did the first plans, we had a ten percent affordable housing element in them. We had that in it before it was popular to do it. Now we have much more looking into areas where we're doing like the corridor in, on Hardy Boulevard and on Sierra Boulevard, Douglas, on places that maybe revamp them, that we need to make some changes. And there's opportunities of looking for affordable housing there. Affordable and, and regular price housing, but offering, is it more like attainable housing? I think everything's, affordable is kind of a difficult word because things cost money, but I'd say attainable is what we're looking for. And we are building more, you probably saw Main Street Apartments, Losi Apartments, and we have one coming up.
Mr. Wukmer?
The housing, the housing requirements in Roseville is something that can be directly impacted by the city council. They have the power of rezoning. So just two months ago, we rezoned a lot of, the city council rezoned some new spaces for, from, to multifamily homes and units. So not any low-income units in that particular cycle, but it is, that is one thing we can do on the city council moving forward. Part of the problem as well of actually building the houses, as I mentioned earlier, the CFDs, that have requirements for green space and developer speeds that have kind of been pushed off over and over again. So your previous building developers have really put up debt that the newer developers have to build. So that's why we haven't seen a lot of building across, for example, a lot of baseline, the west side of baseline, the western edge of District Two. There's not a lot of appetite for developers to, to build down there because of the native requirements that they would have to, such as costs for their CFD.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
You know, I, I think I have a different perspective than my two fellow candidates here. And what that is, is you see that, you know, if they, if they are able to build a new home, a lot of times you'll see that home's going to go for six hundred thousand dollars. And the typical family can't afford that. As to government programs that can help, you know, we've raised taxes, I'm not saying necessarily in Roseville itself, but statewide. We've raised taxes over and over again to try to solve this housing problem. We spent millions and millions of dollars. I think there's a reason why in Oklahoma or Ohio, housing is so cheap while in California, housing is so expensive. And there's a statewide two million housing unit shortage of housing. So I don't think this is something we can solve in Roseville alone. I think it's something that we have to work with other partners, other council members and other supervisors on a statewide basis to solve. And I have a lot of endorsements from council members close by, like Brett Gammel and Citrus Heights, but also, also on a statewide basis.
Our next question will begin with Mr. Wukmer. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Absolutely. It's critical thought and really thinking there. Not just the overall issue, how it affects everyone, but we need to focus on the dignity of individuals as well. So really respecting individual rights as well as the community needs and community organizations. That's really the key. That's what's been, I think, missing in, as you mentioned, federal and state guidelines, but also I think we've seen locally here as the past two and a half years in particular, were a lot of controversial things that suddenly aren't controversial anymore. We've had a lot of backpedaling and backtracking from national organizations now that decided that, you know, mass mandates and things aren't as important as they were back then when everyone was panicking about them. So that's, it's important that we maintain a mindful head, continue to think critically and rationally and have a good grounded ideals that we're going to be really thinking off of and using as our baseline.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
Really just listen. I'm a good listener and I'm not under the illusion that I know everything. I think that humility is so important for a leader. And, you know, I have my own perspective, but I love to hear other people's perspectives. I always have. And I think that that's something that we're missing in our politics nationally. And when we see it so much, people are so angry and we see it, we see it all over the place. I don't think it has to be that way. That's what the Bridging the Gap forums, for example, were about. They were about bringing people together and listening and talking. So if I'm elected, I want to do a lot more listening. In fact, they say you have two ears and one mouth for a reason, because you should listen twice as much as you talk. And I think that's a correct axiom.
Ms. Rakuci?
I think what's really important is making sure everybody is heard and they, they hear what their feelings are, what their ideas are, and they know that they, they weren't just kind of brushed away. Example, I can use, the first time we had Gathering Inn come and talk to us about the respect center with the thirty beds and the neighbors had come there and a lot of misinformation that was happening. They didn't know how many beds and what was happening. So what we did is wanted to have more communication and wanted to have more dialogue. So we, the, we, neighbors had sent, even before you had, you had that, you brought us, we had neighbors bringing emails, phone calls, you know, on their feelings of what was going on. But we said, hey, Gathering Inn, please speak with them and go over some of the issues that they have. And they did. It was kind of hot and heavy, but they did. And then they came back over to us, but we wanted to make sure that people were heard.
Our next question will begin with Mr. Eisenhammer. How do you think Roseville can prevent fentanyl abuse and deaths?
Oh my goodness, what a great question. You know, we, I, I think that it's sad that we went away from the Just Say No program back in the day. I actually, I actually had the opportunity for a couple of years to work on an anti-drug campaign. And it is so sad how much people just don't know about drugs and how, how dangerous drugs are. For example, the methamphetamines are made out of motor oil. It just blew my mind. So I think that the, the key, the most important key to deal with fentanyl and with, with drug abuse in general is education. You can't, you know, you can't do it on a strictly enforcement basis. People need to be educated. And I think that, that's something I would love to be a part of because I've done that and I really enjoyed it and I'm really proud of it.
Ms. Rakuci?
I think a couple of things. I'm glad that there's actually a reversal for fentanyl, but you have to use it right, right then and there or, you know, personal dying. But they can have it natively, the firemen have it, the police officers have it to save a life. Or if there's family members that do drugs, no, fentanyl is, is absolutely lethal. And it's unfortunate that you can, sometimes it's just, it's on your clothes. It doesn't, you don't even have to eat it or swallow it. I'm real happy that our police are working to go close to catching people and, or actually the big sellers, because that's the ones that are hurting the kids. You know, kids think they buy X and they get Y and they die. And so I'm, anything that we can do for, I agree, you're right, Eric, education is very important, but sometimes kids are goofy and they think, yeah, you know, it's all they build and that's not bad. Well, this stuff kills you. And like you said, you can just touch it too.
Mr. Wukmer?
As we mentioned, education is key. The Roseville joint high school districts, the first fentanyl, really anti-fentanyl drug campaign, just, just one dose can kill. So that was a key thing that we are doing here as well, enforcement being a key part. But, again, I mentioned I had worked with some after-school campaigns with the Department of Defense from across the world as their own schools, as they follow soldiers and their families around. And they have done some good programs as well. Again, the, the problem is it's spiraled out of control so far recently. It is important that we address it at every level, young kids as well, and really have that enforcement that continues to kick in as well.
For our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Rakuci. Given District Two contains all the historic neighborhoods of Roseville, how will you help preserve and promote this unique characteristic?
You know, I think all our neighborhoods are really unique and very different. I'm really proud of our, our neighborhoods because most of the houses are between fifty and a hundred years old and they all look different. And if you go to the neighborhoods, a lot of people are fixing them up and, and keeping them that way. There's some that are remodeling and they're not looking the same. As being supportive of, I'm, I'm seeing people having more interest in having houses that look different. And not that they're particularly cheaper, they still cost a lot of money in, in our areas, but making sure that, you know, that they're, that people come in. I think the biggest thing in neighborhoods, making sure that you're, the people that are in your neighborhoods aren't, you know, in the gangs and to things that are counterproductive to your neighborhood and put your neighborhood down. And that could even happen in, in, in other neighborhoods too, but I, I see that and I think that's important.
Mr. Wukmer?
There are a lot of historic neighborhoods here. We mentioned, you ever mentioned the Sierra Vista historic sign earlier. That's a big community identity. So not only allowing communities to have their own identity, but to endorse it and promote it as well, that's an important part. I don't need to really preach to the choir here from the Roseville Coalition Neighborhood Association, but it is important that we all keep our identities and really have a chance to share them with our old neighbors and our new neighbors as we come and go. And speaking of old neighbors in the historic districts, I think we've mentioned as well that there's a lot of the stamps in the historic areas. Just because it's old doesn't mean we can't improve upon it. So we've seen, you look at the walk around the ground in some places in our historic areas, you'll see the WBA, the other works projects from nineteen forty stamped on a lot of roads. So I think we need to, we can still improve those areas, bring some of the sidewalks, lighting up to code for the safety of others as well. So that's important to preserve our history, but also improve upon our lives.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
Well, like I said, I want to put that historic Sierra Vista sign back up. And, but also, speaking of historic Sierra Vista, I don't know if any of you noticed this, but there's a new development on the west side of town that's also called Sierra Vista. So I don't know how that was, was allowed, but that's something that I will definitely fight against. That does diminish the historic character of that community to have another Sierra Vista in another part of Roseville. Although like council member Rakuci said, preventing crime, preventing gangs, that's so incredibly important as well. And ARKONA obviously is such a key part of that and bringing communities together, organizing events. And not every neighborhood in Roseville actually has an ARKONA unit. I did one that does not. So I'm going to be joining with some neighbors to start one. And I think that we need every neighborhood in Roseville to have a neighborhood association.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Wukmer. Please let us know at least three things that will benefit us as your constituents if you were elected again.
Really benefiting everyone, I'll go back to the historic Sierra Vista. And there are a lot of areas that lack the proper lighting. Again, a lot of this has been due to a, I don't want to say stinginess of funds, but just the policies that the city of Roseville has in place. Are willing to maintain the sidewalks and dead streetlights that we have now, but not improve upon them to bring up the ratings game. So that's going to be a huge benefit for District Two that I'm going to look into. I mentioned some parks and services. There are quite a few parks that are being used, essentially squatted upon for some homelessness populations. So we need to improve the security and safety of those areas. And lighting is a big one that, that helps with as well. Also, just again, public safety for everyone is a key thing. There's some traffic flow issues that I've heard just talking with the local communities that I'd like to try to address in the city council here as well going forward.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
Just to make sure I heard the question right. Did you ask three things that all do that will benefit our community?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Well, I, I mentioned this a little earlier on, but the three things that I want to focus on are number one, to balance the budget without raising taxes. Number two, to empower, not enable, the homeless. And number three, to provide our local law enforcement with the resources they need to fight crime.
Ms. Rakuci?
I'll piggyback on, on that. Number one, like I said, my- Number one, like I said in my, one of the other talks, we don't raise taxes, you get that from the federal and the state, not, not Roseville, so that's not going to happen. But you're right, we will balance the budget and will, and we have open meetings, eight to, we have eight that are always scheduled. People are welcome and also can make any changes and, and make comments on it and be helpful for. Fire and police, as I told you before, is well important to me. I want to make sure that we have the, the resources and, and work with our community. They're well appreciated and, and loved by our community and by council, because we feel if we don't have a good police and fire department, we don't have a good city, because no one's going to go to the galleries, no one's going to walk down the street if they don't feel safe. And I want to make sure that that's, that's highly, you know, in, on my mind. Other things, I just casually mentioned, committees I've been on, I'm, I do a lot of things on water and electric, and I'll continue to do that for us.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Eisenhammer, and I'm going to combine two questions here. Traffic can be really bad on certain streets throughout Roseville. As Roseville grows and gets more traffic, do you have any ideas to reduce traffic or make Roseville more walkable? And are roundabouts in our future?
Are roundabouts in our future? I, I think it's very important that we do a survey before we put in a new roundabout, because I hear a lot of strong opinions about roundabouts, and I, I'll be honest about myself, I'm not a fan of them, but if that's what the people in the neighborhood want, then, you know, I think, I think they have benefits, but I want to make sure that we, because we, we are here to represent the community, that's how democracy is supposed to work. So it doesn't really matter, my opinion is that I don't like roundabouts, I don't, but if the community wants them, then I'll ensure. And I also want to say that part of that traffic comes from the density, right? So there's a program to increase density in Roseville, and a lot of that comes from the state, but I think that we can fight that. There's an effort already underway to fight that called Our Neighborhood Voices Coalition. I think there are better solutions. I will join that coalition, and that is essentially directly related to traffic.
Ms. Rakuci?
We've done a, a lot of different things and things that are coming along. One of the things that Josia changed is hooking Twente's Boulevard all the way to Washington Boulevard, and it's going to hook up to Parkway. It'll take you from one side of town closer to, like, where the center of Roseville Hospital. Another access point in, I'm thinking, if you needed an ambulance or had to go to a hospital or you need to, you just want to be there faster, there's going to, it's going to go where there's, and we're working with the Union Pacific, and that's on the books, and it's, it's coming, that'll make a big difference. We're also making, you saw Washington Boulevard, we widened that, we have bike areas to walk and, and keeping the bike trails clear and areas where, not only the bike trails, but by the parks where you can ride bikes and, and go do things in your community.
Mr. Wuckner?
For traffic, there's a couple of things. I talked to not only people in District Two, but also like District Five, we, we talked about the growth of Roseville along the edges. Only just recently has the infrastructure started to catch up with that growth. So a common complaint over in West Roseville for people was to say that, that in order to fill up their gas tank, they had to drive down into central, central Roseville to fill up their gas tank, do a lot of shopping, before that new Bailey's one opened on Blue Oaks fulfillment, they'd have to come all the way into town or, heaven forbid, go up north or somewhere else outside of Roseville to spend their tax dollars on groceries. So now that infrastructure's starting to catch up, that's alleviated some of the traffic concerns along the edges. However, we still need a big, a big focus on safety. Part of that is there's some stop signs, for example, on Americon off the baseline. Released right into a school, there's a lot of danger at that particular intersection, so we want to make sure that there's some safety involved as well. We've just hired some new patrol officers, and as well, I agree with, roundabouts need to be looked at.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Rakuci. Recently, there was heated discussion over locating a medical respite center in District Two where residents spoke both in favor and against the project. Where do you stand on this?
Yeah, that, that came before us. That came before us for the Gathering in looking for support. They can go and apply for funding without, without the city of Roseville. My feelings, a respite is a real good thing to help people, but you have to put it in the right place. It's one of those things, I would put it next to a hospital, next to like a convalescent home, but putting 30 beds in a, in a small lot in the middle of a, a small, small area on the interstate isn't the answer. A good program, wrong place.
Mr. Wuckner?
Great idea, poor execution. So again, the, the medical respite is, it was too large for some of the initial ideas of having 30 beds on such a small lot. There was some rework, I don't think that was communicated to the community, but ultimately it didn't matter, there's, I think the Gathering in was the non-pro favorization that was focused on that, and they really were trying to push timeline-wise and expedite things to meet these goals for funding. So I think that we just needed to slow down a little bit, I think they, they got the message, but they are, I think, still pursuing, pursuing that one property. There are other properties, other spaces available that I think need to be looked at a little harder. Again, this medical respite would work alongside the one up in Auburn, it's slightly larger. So it is a proven method, but I think that it is, it was poorly executed this time. I hope that the state does not fund the Gathering this time, whether they can come back in the future and with the community's buy-in to pursue such a life-saving.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
Well, I'm, I wrote the petition against that facility that was signed by 140 members of our community, so no, a 30-bed facility with no criminal background checks within 500 feet of an elementary school, absolutely not. And I also want to say that I came to the meeting where I learned about that facility, a friend of mine invited me, and I educated myself, and I educated myself with an open mind. I didn't, I came with concerns, but I didn't come just to say no. But after I watched that, that presentation, I watched a presentation that was given to the council, same presentation, that was given to the council months or so earlier, and I was dismayed, that there was a council member who's not in this room right now, but that said, "Facts Matter" and lectured, lectured the folks as if the conservatives expressed for baseless. I will stand up to that kind of gaslighting if I make it on the council.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Wuckner. At that meeting regarding the medical respite center, illustrated, the voices of the residents can be loud when there is a controversial issue before them. How will you balance public opinion with city goals?
Listening, I think we've addressed that a few times. There is nothing wrong with heated emotions, I think that is a, a main driver of human activity, so it is important that we have, again, the council or someone to step back and then take a, a larger look at things, and I do think that was done well. In this particular incident, the council did essentially vote down the endorsement of the Gathering in's medical respite center. I believe that number was still going forward with their state funding on that. But again, having everyone involved is key. I think it was loud, but it was civil, people respected the rules of debate, everyone who had a chance was able to step up and do that. So it's a long, a long particular city council meeting, but it was important that everyone was able to air their grievances, I think we were all able to see each other's side. Everyone, I think, stepped away and learned something, I know I did, I hope that the Gathering in, I hope all the residents did as well, where they were able to see some of the benefits that were maybe obscured, that we're able to see with the NIMBY idea right in front of their face.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
Well, we live in a democracy, as far as I understand. So if the community's objectives and the communities, what the community is asking for is different than the city's goals, then I think the city needs to reevaluate its goals.
Ms. Rakuci?
I thought our meeting, both meetings that we had, City Hall turned out very well. Yes, it was a, a real strong emotions on both sides, but our mayor did a wonderful job, she, everybody had terms to come up, and the lines were long, everybody was polite, they got their ideas across both sides. I thought it was a very good representation of how, how to deal with a difficult subject. And both meetings, because that first meeting, we had, people sent us emails and, and as I said before, and our call and talk to them, and then we had that second meeting, we said, you know, they needed to have, they needed to have more discussion on it. So I thought it was done well, very professional, everybody had, everybody learned a little bit more, and that's the way to do it.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Eisenhammer. Do you think you have any personal or professional relationships that could become a conflict of interest while serving as a council member?
Uh, no, absolutely not, and I don't, I don't intend to create any either. You know, I, like I said, I had a purpose to run, and that was something I felt within, within myself. If I win, I don't know that I'm going to seek another term after four years. I think that, I think we need to get back to that type of citizen representation. And yeah, no, I'm, I'm literally running just because I care about our community, I want to make a difference, I don't have any conflicts of interest, and I don't want any conflicts of interest either.
Ms. Rakuci?
I don't have any conflicts of interest. I've lived in the same house for 50 years, driven the same car for 15 years, they're, they're very old, so I'm not, and I didn't gain anything, so why, except a wonderful time to be on council and the love of our community and really caring about the community. I have, you know, children and grandchildren here, I have, my husband, been married 54 years, we love the community, I want to do as much as I can, I'm, I have the time, the desire, the interest, the passion of being with the city council and working with community. Would like to have four more years, and I tell my friends, well, after that, maybe I'll help at SPCA and work with kids or something else, but right now, I see myself as, as a leader during really uncertain times at the federal and state level, and I want to be there, you know.
Mr. Wuckner?
As far as professionally, we're, we need to remember, we're all on the same side here, we're all trying to make Roseville better. We have different perspectives, different ideas, but that's where we come together, reason together, and make good decisions here. I don't have any personal, professional relationships that'll conflict the time here on the city council, should I be elected, and that's really important to me for, for us following the rules and regulations. One of the reasons I decided to run a self-funded campaign as well, so that I don't have to have any professional or personal conflicts going into the city council.
For our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Rakuci. Surveys show that increased homelessness and crime are the primary concerns of residents in Roseville. How will you address these concerns?
I'm working on it like we are right now, I mentioned it earlier, we have a relationship, there's not that many that has a social worker and the police officers working together, trying to get people off the streets, getting them sometimes in, in benefits they don't know they have, whether it's military or even getting their IDs so that they can apply for things. We also working with Placer County, they just opened a new mental health facility across from Kaiser on, on Kirby Way, and it's open, pretty much, I wouldn't say free, but you can have almost no insurance and still go in, and there's some walk-ins, and, and so you can just walk in or stay for a couple of days, there is a locked facility part two. And we're also working with Placer County, with the other cities, and looking at insightful things to do. We're, we have picking up graffiti, taking care of the graffiti trash, and doing as much as we can to keep our community clean, and if we see something that we can take care of, we, we go for it.
Mr. Wuckner?
This is a key problem we have to address. I hope that there's, we talked about conflicts of interest, bad feeling, I hope there's no bad feelings with such the Gathering in, the past few questions, we've been pretty hard on them and the medical respite center, they have done. Gathering in does work in downtown Roseville, does have a, a great track record of helping people in the local area, so they, they receive a lot of money and funding from governments, it's important that we continue to work with nonprofits, that's one of the key things for homelessness. But I want to make sure that we all understand, it's, it's not just a, a problem that we here in Roseville can solve, and even if I could snap my fingers and solve the homelessness problem in Roseville today, guess what, tomorrow there would still be homelessness coming into Roseville, there's all kinds, we have to work with our neighboring communities as well. It's not just a single solution, but again, using the resources we have available with our police and safety law enforcement, as well as NGOs, and working with Placer County, that, that homelessness report from Placer County, really, we need to relook at that part of our.
Thank you. Mr. Eisenhammer?
Well, I, I guess, I feel like we've already been asked this question, so I guess you're going to have to hear me say it, how we're not enabling the homeless yet again. But the, I think it's very important that work be part of the equation. So I appreciate when the homeless need to pay something for rent, I think that's a step in the right direction, but when that money can come from some type of government chug as well, I think that that's a problem. I think that people need to work, because I think work gives people purpose, and work gives people dignity, this is about believing in people to get their lives on track and to be better. And like I said, as to the public safety part of the question, you know, I think that we need to pay our deputies what they were promised by the voters three times, and I also think that we need to do some innovative things related to police and like the bridging the gap forms that I worked on in Sacramento.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Wuckner. One neighborhood in District Two recently was mandated to remove a "Welcome to the Neighborhood" sign due to the lack of a description of this type of sign ordinance. Would you support asking staff to amend the ordinance to include this type of sign for historic neighborhoods with no current identity signs?
Absolutely, I think as we mentioned earlier, this is the historic Sierra Vista location, and commercial signs can do it, and one of the reasons this becomes such a, a key problem, not just of the people in Roseville, for the city of Roseville as well, as Roseville's continued to expand and grow, there was a, another Sierra Vista built by the Sierra Vista developer, they decided to name their development Sierra Vista out of the west. They were able to put up a monument and a sign that became as a commercial sign, but that kind of took away, stripped the identity of this historic area within District Two. And so that's a, a key thing that, that we need to, the reason that caused a problem for the city is, the city started sending out notices that were supposed to go to the west Sierra Vista, off to the historic Sierra Vista, there was cross-rapping and confusion at the bureaucratic level. So I think the city created this problem, the city owes the citizens of Roseville the solution to the problem as well. So there's been a lot of work at the ground, at the ground level, and I support that.
Mr. Eisenhammer?
If I win on day one, I will do exactly that.
Ms. Rakuci?
Actually, I was very in favor of having Sierra Vista Historic, Sierra Vista have a sign, because of the, of the sign name difference, because there's another Sierra Vista, just for the confusion. I'm sorry that it ended up the way it did, because it, there was a lot of work with the, with the city on different sizes. I, it's unfortunate that literally I walked, passed by that neighborhood and all of a sudden there's a sign that popped up, and that's not how you do, that's not how you do it. And, but I am interested in, in working with people on making signs more compatible and just in that area. That also came up, they were talking about needing signs in other areas, but I'm particularly interested in this one, because it had, two, two areas have the same name, and I just want them to have some, they need to have their historic Sierra Vista. I would like to look at something, I don't think that sign is the answer, but I think there is an answer.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Eisenhammer. How will you ensure that all your constituents will be served, not just those with special interests?
Well, if, if you know me well in real life, you know that I respond to texts right away, respond to emails right away, and I don't, I don't care about somebody that has a lot of money or somebody that has some big fancy title, I, I don't believe in that, and I've been emphatic about that my whole life. You know, I was the kid that people didn't believe in, and I think that, you know, it is, it is... And I think that, you know, it is, it is so important for people in positions of leadership to not, not just rush to celebrate the people that can do something for them. That's wrong, that's just wrong morally. And I will not, not only not do that, but I will work to empower people who are on the margin, who do need to be heard. I think that, like I keep saying, every one of us has a purpose and money, and I want to uplift people.
Ms. Rakuci.
Everybody needs to have a say, that's what democracy and a republic is. And any of the things that come before us, an item, whether you're talking about a park or a new development, we listen to all the slides that, and the issues that are coming before us. And again, whether you want to email, call, meet for coffee, you know, those are all the things that I do and the other council members do. We feel that we want to hear a cross-section of what's going on. And if there is a new development, what's the pros and cons of something there? Maybe something, there is a question that we don't know about, and we just like to hear your opinion. And it just makes us all have a better project and go forward in our future.
Mr. Wimmer.
Yeah, this is a very interesting question, because again, with Roseville, we are elected by districts. So District 2 is the constituent, but we have to serve all of Roseville. So I think that's key to keep in mind, that we will be serving people who can, in fact, not actually vote for us, and that's something we have to keep in mind. But I think the key to not just allowing special interests to take over or be influenced by them is remembering individual dignity. So I mean, each individual person has their own rights that need to be protected. And so we can't just let someone who's, even if they have a big organization of people, each individual person has the same rights as every other one. So continuing to serve that is the key, loads though, for our democracy is what I hope to do going forward.
We have one more question this evening, and the first person to respond will be Ms. Rakuci. How will you work in collaboration and support with Arcona as a Roseville city council member?
I think, what I really think about Arcona is, and the one I see, all our communities, is working like with Crime Stoppers, that you're gonna be, you're gonna be the eyes and ears of our community. And I think that's really important, even when I talk about that I believe in strong police and fire, you'll hear this from, "Please, call us if you see something." I like the idea that Arcona does some special things on the holidays, to bring the community together, and people that have never talked to each other together. And also, if there's issues that are in the area, that they can bring that further up to council or, you know, or make us aware that there's even an issue or a concern. But I think sometimes everybody's too busy, and you don't even know who your neighbors are. And I think this gives people a chance to know their neighbors.
Mr. Wimmer.
Well, Arcona's got a great field of support throughout the community as well. We have people who aren't even from District 2 here, interested in the District 2 race. So I think the outreach is a key part of the community, but also building neighborhood association is important for getting people together. One of the things I would like to really do, as I mentioned earlier, the community facilities, the CFDs, are very key to how Roseville government, city government manages and supports its local community. So I would like to see more of a realignment or a understanding within Arcona and the neighboring districts of the CFD, so that they can better influence. It's oftentimes the homeowners and who have to vote on establishing a CFD, which will allow, open up the channels for more funding, more opportunities, revitalization of neighborhoods, and that's gonna be working with not only the city government, but also organizations of homeowners and the community here in Roseville.
Mr. Eisenhammer.
You know, I think a lot of people in our society at large are asking themselves, why is it that we have so much more mental illness? Why do we have so much more drug abuse? Why do we have all of these school shootings? And I think that one of the biggest differences between our society now and our society 50 years ago or 100 years ago is the loss of community. It's too many people who get home, and they park their car in the garage, close to the garage door, and never get to meet or get to know their neighbors. And I think one of the things that makes Roseville so wonderful is that we're not like that. That my neighborhood, we know each other, we know each other's kids, we watch out for each other, and that's awesome, and Arcona is an important part of that. I will work to make sure that every neighborhood in Roseville has an Arcona chapter, has a neighborhood association, because it's a critical part of building our community and making Roseville the awesome place to live that it is.
And now each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. We'll begin with Mr. Wimmer.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for your time today with a long event. But I think, I hope you learned a lot about all of us here and what you can do. But let me talk a little bit more, what I hope to do going forward after remembering this election for city council. See, one thing I hope to bring to the community, courage of conviction. Again, my whole adult life, I've been taking the oath of service, to serve others here, and I want to continue that oath, serving here locally and serving you in the community here in Roseville. I think, again, there are going to be a lot of challenges that we will all face in the next two or four years, and I would like to be there to help, assist, and move through some very difficult choices and challenges, as the rising cost of living, safety issues without the community. I'll be for things that need to be addressed, both in keeping in mind individual dignity, but also empathy, and sometimes making difficult solutions to hard problems. Intellectual integrity, I promise to give everything, look at every issue, try to see all sides, and listen to the people for Roseville, and really apply critical thinking, and some of the, a lot of experience and efforts I've seen throughout the world by Hasbro and what has to work, bringing here to Roseville, continue to drive us forward, to do good things and continue our growth and prosperity, even in a tumultuous future. Then speaking of the future, I also want to preserve the future. We've seen a lot of people with a lot of very good ideas, that are so good they have to be made mandatory. So there are people that want to refuse other choices and other ideas. So I talked about a little bit the low-no emissions vehicles for Roseville City School buses, having to destroy the old buses in order to buy new buses. I think that really restricts our options in the future, particularly if we ever come across a national tragedy or state tragedy, you know, necessarily a big earthquake, but we've seen some in other countries and in other states of the nation. And I want to make sure we're ready for it.
Thank you. Ms. Rakuci.
Thank you for having all of us here tonight. I want to go forward and do the best I can to help the community, as I have been. I work a really good chief player, I work a lot with the supervisors. They endorse me, and the council, and the mayors, and a lot of the other park and rec commissioners, plan commissioners, and that's really important, because there's a lot of people working together to make Roseville great. And I think half the people you guys here are doing the same thing for coming and listening to, listening to the three of us, and making good decisions when you're gonna vote. But I promise you that I'll be, I work a lot on water and electric issues, and I work on state level, and work with our utility directors, and I work on landfill. So I'm that kind of a person, I work a lot on all our services that Roseville has, the police, the fire, the parking rec, and the utilities that other cities don't have. And I will do my best, as I have in past years, working with my council to keep us one of the best cities in, I think, the best city in California, and definitely the best, best in the South, I'm jealous, best in the United States. And because we have good people, and I think we care, and we try to make things good. And as we go forward, not to forget our past, and not to forget what got us here in the beginning. Because I think if you lose your core identity, you don't know where you're going in the future. And I think that's real important. And I'm for people my age, kids, for the future generations, and for us that are living here now. Thank you.
Mr. Eisenhammer.
Well, I agree with Paulie, and Roseville's the greatest city in America. And thank you all for coming here this evening. You know, let me just say, you know, I'm a doer. I, you know, I believe in our community, I believe our community is the greatest city in America. I think that there are some ways that we can do better, but we are one fantastic, fantastic community. And I'm honored to have been included on this panel, and I don't want to keep you here any longer. Thank you so much for coming and listening to us.
Well, that concludes our forum. I'd like to thank our candidates for participating. Let's give them a big round of applause. I'd also like to thank all the volunteers who made this forum possible. There is some candidate literature on the table in the back, pick some up as you leave. And candidates have offered to stay for a few minutes afterwards to meet and greet people. Thank you all for coming tonight and being a respectful audience. You made my job very easy. And please make sure to vote November 8th and make our democracy work. Thank you.